Okay. We can start in just a few minutes.
John, can you send your data to the community?
Yeah, I'm a part of the system.
Yeah.
Yeah. My students and them.
I think I can do that. There's no end at all. If you can be serious. Sure. And you can play your night, but it's very so. We have a hot spot and I don't know that she want to work. Recording in progress.
The Bible was one. The Bible is which in the Bible here.
Is it the same though?
That's the same passage again. The Bible seems to be my question.
Just let me know when everything.
May for them already when you are. It's already.
Oh, you are? Okay. And do we have any council members online?
We do not.
You don't? Okay. But we do have forums. So, okay, we'll go ahead and call the order at five thirty-six, the community of the whole. And first up is the good of the order. Can you tell some members have anything to the good of the order tonight? Okay. So then we'll move on, review of regular meeting agenda. Let's see. I think, was there anything on the consent agenda that anyone had questions on or concerns? Okay. All right. So with that, we'll just go ahead and move on to our first item, which is introduction and the police department staff, the chief of.
Here we may have council members of the community and staff of the president. And Chief DeBak, please. As you're aware, we've been working for the past eighteen months to get officers hired and their PD staff. I'd like to introduce our newest officer, who's a manager. She comes to us from Spokane, Police Department, City of Spokane. And in a letter, she's.
So I think you said, my name is Samantha, storehouse, storehog. Either one, I will respond to. Storehouse sometimes, but you gotta be really well. I won't do any copy. I moved to Washington from Texas where I grew up. I love hunting and fishing. My family has a huge ranch in Texas. My mom actually was born embraced in Portland, and then she moved to Texas with my dad. And then I moved to like Portland area. It was really weird this time. I'm married. My husband is a family doctor in Spokane, Forkins. My oldest is nineteen and graduated last year, and my youngest is in preschool. But only four. I like hunting and fishing. I don't do a whole lot of it in Washington. You guys have rules. Very different in houses, but Texas is all shredded in. So you get leased where you have your land to go and you're good. Biggest fear is I'm gonna trample on somebody's private land here and it's not gonna be good. Love wine tasting. So my husband is super excited to come here in this warm summer. I have been here three weeks. They put a pitch fry outside. They printed a little mothering once a week. And I love it. It reminds me of the town that I grew up in. It was about this height when I grew up. Everybody here is friendly. They want to see me. I mean, I'm sure there are people that don't. So far, everybody I've talked to and contacted has been happy that I'm here. I am happy to be here. Thank you.
Is anyone having a question? Well.
What's your favorite winery? Oh. So I don't have my favorite Washington winery. Yes. I'm open to some justice. It's called Paradiso Winery. It's right outside of Austin. It's my favorite. It is the only place that I'm a wine member. And they get four bottles every year and I love it.
What general part of Texas are you from? But you mentioned Austin, so I wasn't sure if that was.
So I'm originally from, I call it the armpit of Texas. My house, so follow it down into the curve and like right in the middle of the curve is Del Rio. And seriously, the armpit of Texas. I lived three miles from the Mexico border. Most of my adult life I spent in San Antonio. Our branch is maybe about two hours northwest of San Antonio, Austin area. So.
Well, thank you so much for joining.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And so with that, then we'll move on to our next item, my presentation from Waste Management with Marcy and Manabusin. But without us.
As Marcy online, do we know?
We do.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Members of Community and Staff. Marcy Manabusin, Mayor Protem McHenry did a great job pronouncing that. Thank you so much. And I am from Waste Management. I am here to do kind of our annual report update presentation. So with that, I will jump in and see if I can share my screen. Okay, I think I've got it here. And so again, my name is Marcy Manabusin. I'm a contract manager with Waste Management, so I manage the contract that we have with the city of Duval. We are now into our second year of this new contract, so I just wanted to come by and give you a brief update on what we've been up to, what kind of happened in the last year and that kind of thing. As always, I kind of love to point out our community engagement and just we're excited to have the events coming back online to be part of, you know, Duval Days, Summer Stage, Sand Blast. The Arbor Day, the Duval Earth and Arbor Day event is one that we come to every year too, I believe, since I've been in this role at least. And so it's really fun to get out with the community and share tips on recycling and things like that. Part of our contract and part of the things that we report on every year is the tonnage that we collect in your community. And so this slide here gives you kind of a breakdown of what we collected for each line of business. You'll see that, you know, we really point out the diversion rate and the diversion rate is the amount of material that we keep out of the landfill. So the material that goes into recycling or for composting, we consider that, that's what we consider in diversion rates. And so you can see for the residential folks in Duval, we're diverting about fifty-eight percent of our material that were the waste that we're generating at home, we're diverting that from a landfill. So that's great. We're recycling it. We're composting it. And although, all of those good things. So this is the breakdown for each kind of customer sector that we have in the town. A couple of reminders or things I wanted to point out about our new contract because again, we're in year two of this new tenure contract with the city. We have an on-call curbside cleanup available for all residents that you can use once every year. So last year, we had about a hundred customers take advantage of this new service offering. And so just wanna point that out so that folks know that it's available and know that they can contact our customer service team. And we'll schedule that typically it's on the next Friday, you know, your service day from when you call us. You can set out furniture. You know, if you just have extra garbage, you know, those kinds of things for that free curbside cleanup. We also are accepting used motor oil and used cooking oil at the curb. So you just wanna put that into a clear plastic, like a milk jug, that kind of thing that has a screw top lid. You'll wanna label it for us so that we know if it's cooking oil or motor oil. And then you'll just put that next to the recycling bin and we'll take that away. And then another new service as part of this contract is bear carts. So we know that, you know, we're close to the mountains and animals and wildlife are a real concern sometimes. And so we do have those carts available to use for garbage and even compost as well. So you can, again, contact our customer service team and we can get you one of those carts. For our businesses, recycling is fully included with your garbage rates. So this is a great way to rightsize your service. You know, maybe you can increase your recycling and decrease your garbage and that kind of thing to save money. So that's kind of a newer thing in our contract as well. And then we had a community drop-off event, so we set up outside of Taylor's Boat Launch. And in October, and we're gonna do that in October again this year. And folks could come bring their items to us to drop them off as a community cleanup event. So again, we'll hold that in October and we'll start putting a flyer together and getting information out to the community in the summer so that people can plan and prepare for that event as well. You also may have heard that, and I talked about it a little bit last year when I came. We are fully upgrading our Cascade Recycling Center, which is in Woodenville. That's where we process all of Duval's recycling. It's going on a full rebuild. We started that rebuild in November and it should be done by August. We're thinking July or August. And then our facility will reopen, have state-of-the-art technology to process all of our recyclables so that we put out clean material back to the market. Currently, while the facility is closed, we do have another facility that we own in Tacoma. And so we're taking all of the material down there right now to be processed until we reopen this summer. I wanted to touch on this just a little bit because I know the organics management law is upon us. And I know kind of the big thing that the city is probably talking about or getting ready for is the compost procurement ordinance that needs to be passed. So I kind of wanted to touch on just a few things that affect our part of the business as on the collection side. And so really, the biggest goal is that by twenty thirty, seventy-five percent of previously disposed organic materials must be diverted from landfills. And so there's kind of this phased in approach to get there with businesses. I have had some presentations that I've been part of from the Department of Ecology on the solid waste advisory committees that I sit on in Snohomish and Skagit counties. So you know, they have kind of given me some detail that I wanted to provide. So of course, businesses does not include multifamily. And starting in January twenty twenty-four, businesses that generate at least eight cubic yards of organic material per week must arrange for some kind of organics management service, collection service, if you will. And so those are gonna be really large producing businesses, schools and hospitals and kind of those big generators. And then it's gonna phase in over over time here in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. From the presentations I've had from Department of Ecology, you know, there's a January twenty twenty-seven organics collection services that needs to be available to residential and non-residential customers. And from what I've been told from Ecology, you know, having subscription level service satisfies that requirement. So kind of wanted to share that with you since you do offer that service as a subscription today for residents and businesses alike. So I think we're in pretty good shape on the service side of meeting the requirements of this law. So just kind of wanted to point that out. And really, that is all I have for tonight. Yep, that's the end of my presentation. So I'm very happy to answer any questions. I also wanted to note that this, I gave you just a brief overview of our report. Our full report is also should be included in your packet as well. So if there's any questions on that, I can answer those too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marcy. Any questions? I'll start with one. I was just curious, do you have data? And maybe this wasn't the extra information. I was curious how many bear carts or also compost carts are also utilized in Duval right now? Do you have that number or? Uh, need ballpark?
I do, actually. So at our last quarterly kind of check-in that I do with Steve and Cynthia joined us in the last one. We talked about the bear carts and we actually have one active customer in Duval right now that's using a bear garbage cart. So there is one of those. For residential compost, so we have two thousand six hundred ninety-two active residential customers for garbage. And seventeen hundred forty-four of them subscribe to compost. So we're at about a sixty-five percent subscription rate on residential compost. We also currently have eight commercial customers that are signed up for compost service.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Marcy.
You may not actually have data on this. I don't know if you even track sort of the quality of both recyclables and sort of waste. But I know there was an issue as part of the can replacement, you include labeling that indicated, you know, the appropriate things to put in each bin and the type of material. I was curious if there was any sort of anecdotal or data just to show that whether that helped, if there was an improvement in terms of the the quality of how, you know, folks were sorting their recycling from garbage or if there was any type of downstream uptake in terms of the increase in recyclables over the previous twelve-month period. If you don't know it off the top of your head, that's, that's fine as well. I was just curious.
I don't, I don't have any kind of data for you on that. I do know that, you know, our labels that we put on the carts have evolved over time based on studies that we've done. And we actually have a revenue sharing agreement with King County that funds a lot of our studies and research and the outreach programs that we do. And so we've gotten to these kind of labels that you have today, the very kind of clear, simple, picture-based labels based on a lot of the studies and research that we've done through programs funded, you know, through our revenue sharing agreements. But I don't have any specific data for you on that. I'm sorry, Councilmember Nuplin, I can't actually hear you. I could see that you were talking, but I can't hear what you're saying. I'm so sorry.
It's weird, but perhaps if you may speak up a bit, that'll help.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Okay. So there's been confusion in the community about what options there are for recycling or disposing of items. And I know the city has some kind of agreement, I think with Ecology maybe to have recycling events, but I think there are also opportunities through Waste Management. And so I don't know what marketing or education is provided by Waste Management or coordinated with the city to make sure our community knows that we're already paying for these events, they're included. Things like that.
So, you know, we do the, the drop-off event that we held in the, in October, and again, we'll do that October this year. And so that is good for garbage and we also have recycling available at that event. Are you speaking to, you know, that kind of event or something different?
Yeah, any of those events. I don't know if there's a central place where someone who lives here could find out when is the next event? What can I recycle? Things like that. I think there's, it definitely comes up frequently. People say, oh, I have a computer. Where can I dispose of it? Or I have a couch you can haul it away. And it's like, well, that's included. You can call Waste Management. You know, I think there's a lot of people, because it's a new feature, that don't know about it.
Okay, I got you. Yeah. So on our, our annual service guide that we, we send out, it does have details about the furniture, the couch that you could set out, right? That you could contact us and do that once a year. And we can also get our website, which is WM Northwest and Northwest is all spelled out, dot com slash Duval. And so we have our own Duval website. And so we can get the flyer for the community drop-off event added there as well as shared, you know, by the city, of course. And, and then again, the our, our service guide that's mailed out annually has information about, you know, the curbside pickup that people can schedule and electronics, you know, different options for disposing of things that don't go in the cart type of thing.
Okay. Great. Other questions? Okay. Well, Marcy, thank you so much for your presentation and answering all of our questions tonight.
Thanks so much for having me. Take care.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have ARC Plan Development District with Doris. Evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Doris Grandell, Public Works, City Engineer, here for speed because he's on vacation. And I'm gonna be introducing Daniel. He is our ARC consultant, who has been with on the facility assessment and planning documents.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me back again. We are in the midst of our session, our work and report. And the intent here tonight was to give you a debrief of where we're at from the process. And then ideally, tonight, to have a bit of a workshop to show you your assets and what your values are and the discussions on those assets to move your project forward. We're trying to completion. We do have some introductions. Just with Tom Beckwood, who will be joining us as our lead planner.
First, just pointing at the document, I'll see if you can just put that in the board.
Yes.
And I'm sorry.
I mean, you have a slideshow to pull up so we can have a good work session in the post. I would, I would hope we're happy yet. Fireman, I was saying, the last time I was with you, folks, you were still with the firemen. So I was like, sitting up on the parking lot, like, wait, I don't think anyone's here, right? If you need help, I have a chip too. So. That okay? Yeah, just do. Yeah, three quarters.
Like it doesn't match. It's not a standard ratio. But yeah.
That's okay. It's a bit small. I mean, yeah.
John, can we push it over to the main screen?
Certainly. Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you. Thank you for the.
If you wanna move, not to make recommendations, but did you wanna move the attendees? If you want to move, not to make recommendations, but did you want to move the attendees to the smaller screens or do you have a question? Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that resolution. Yeah, the worst brother. I don't want to settle on the south side screen.
John, we're there. I don't know if Tom is here, I can't tell if Tom Beckford is joining, but he'll be joining us. Uh, remotely as well. Um, yes, so just overview here, uh, the the slide shows that we are again are showing tonight to walk us through an agenda. Uh, within an hour that we have, I know it's not a lot of time and you might have a lot of questions. But that said, again, the intent was to get to the workshop side uh to show all of your assets and where we're at with the valuation. So we can get some discussion during those. Next slide, please. Uh, I don't know if Steve showed, shared this with you, but again, this was just a very simplified. For for those of you that haven't been involved in the process. Uh, this was showing you a very simplified um. Work process of what we've been going through, like you don't want to go walk over here and try and double steam. Um, but in in essence, the project is what it is, it's facility assessments, it's a citywide plan, operational work plan. And financial discussions about how to move things forward to have a complete deliverable. Uh, and within all of that, what's happening is we've got numerous consultants that have been involved with us. Uh, we've talked with the team, uh, the city team back and forth numerous times. Uh, and again, you guys have heard some of that folk, some of that discussion. Uh, from the outset, we also have a lot of programming things that we've walked through with everybody. Um, and then we have done what's, again, if if those of you don't know, we've done facility assessments themselves, so that then. Literal walkthroughs of all of your buildings uh with observations and discovery. Uh, and then that is summarized in what those facility conditions are are at or where they're at. They're measured by a lot of different data. Um, and then for this night, you're to get through, uh, what is the next step of really, again. Having this dialogue with everybody to show you where we're at. Uh, with all of the buildings and then have a, you know, again, a workshop where we get to hear what you folks have. And have, at this point in time, what you folks are seeing and what you you're feeling for for your buildings themselves. Um, that said, um, uh, Steve again and Marissa are going to help with taking notes uh for what might come out of tonight. And in hopes of having that for us to use. And then we'll refine those docu- those recommendations as we move into the next process. And then again, final document will be a report back to you folks, so we likely have another workshop. Uh, in between, uh, at some point, they will let you know. Next slide, please. So the overview, if you haven't seen this, again, this was really an executive summary of the tasks that we had. Uh, placed before us, it was again five tasks that, uh, again, that were, we worked through and tonight was, I was to show you. I wanted to show you the work that's performed and the work that's still in progress, um, and. You know, forgive me, but you know, again, here's my mugshot and the person who is actually working on it still, so I was trying to be clear as to who is still. Uh, you know, part of the consulting team that were um involved in this process. Uh, of course, task one was facilities condition assessments, you've seen some of these matrices and these charts. Uh, that again took from the rapid assessment and went to a more detailed assessment. Where that data was put into a matrix and that matrix is what you'll see tonight. That get, that gets us the evaluation, the FCI index rating for each of the buildings. Uh, important to note that all of the uh task two, the capital facilities improvements information is an appendix to. The CIP plan that Marissa was putting together, uh, and all of the information that we're using is an appendix to that, it's not, it's not part of the full plan. That work uh again is mostly done, it's still being uh finalized with the city, I know that a lot of that data is. Think I described before, it's live, it's a live document where. Financial numbers can change and and or depending on the city's needs, we can manipulate those. Uh, to show the facility condition index over time, if it's facility condition use. And the money involved with fixing buildings or repairing. Uh, repairing anything that's necessary, that's needed uh for the buildings. That, again, I said, is a flexible number that, again, was city. Uh, uh, involvement is dependent on what you want to do at any point in time, it's based on components of the building itself. Next slide, please. But and then the task, task three was an operational work plan that's still being worked on with Pinnacle. Uh, the Pinnacle group is a group that is collecting data to show, again. Maintenance standards and set a level of service for delivery model for all the maintenance. Uh, for each building themselves. And three primary work groups we're looking at there is facility maintenance, HVAC and custodial. Task four is a long-range financial strategy. Again, with RC cost and backwards, uh, we continue to work on this. Uh, to identify the rate of renewal to maintain components for each facility. And and that becomes a usable document, again, uh, where we're using existing data provided by the city, a lot of that has been provided by you. Most of it was of property inspection reports, facilities in inventory summary plans. And city budgeting documentation, so our team has been looking at all that information. To finish our deliverable for for you all. And coordinate it with that. And then five was the planning level for future expansion, uh, we've completed four concept. Level planning studies that, again, I don't know how much you have seen in detail, but. Those, again, are directly derived from the programming exercises that we've worked with to plan for the future growth. Next slide, please. Questions and answers for any of that right now, anything from the group?
We are going to take breaks, like pause and to see if you guys have any questions that we can go like in bits and pieces throughout this presentation.
This is a pause.
This is a pause.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey?
Hey, yes.
Um, so as far as space planning, as I was looking over the actual report, um, it looks. And and this could be uh an assumption, but it looks like. Um, the staffing needs of the future are based on the staffing levels of today versus. Um, we have not completed a workload analysis yet, um, but we know that as of we are today, we're significantly understaffed in many areas. Um, so the question is, um, is that a counterpoint and if not, is there a simple formula to expand that out based on that workload analysis that's coming in a few months?
Yeah, no, I'll show you, it was actually a future plan, so we've got three levels of that expansion and I'll, I'll show you that here in the next. Uh, coming down, yeah, next slide, please. Is Tom there?
I think that's not like.
Oh, Tom, okay, good.
Uh, Councilmember Nuplin?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just curious if you are taking into account how much a city like. Duval could afford to spend when you decide to make your recommendations or are you recommending optimal versus? Reality?
Right now, it's optimal, but again, Tom can elaborate more on the financial strategies. Which is what I think is the big component that we haven't even talked to you about. And I have that slide again at the end, that he can show you how to map this out for you all.
And where the money would come from?
Where the money would come from and how you can apply it, and Tom can address those rules for you.
Okay.
Don, can you hear us?
Yeah, Dan, I'm on, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, all right, sorry, just making sure you're there, that's all right.
Okay.
Thank you, man. Um, so just, next, next segment of this is the 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 stability conditions. And outcomes, and again, I tried to give a very brief executive summary to this. To the point, uh, again, listing uh the five assets, one, two, three, four, five assets here, I will say. That I've removed uh Dorey Farmstead and uh the depot. From this, just because, again, I've been told and I know that those are in perpetuity, you you folks want to keep those as historic properties. Uh, the numbers and things relative to their condition assessment are still in the report. But again, I'm not putting value to those like in them itself, that that type of thing, I'm sorry. Um, City Hall, um, while existing facility is usable or fair conditions, it poses no obvious. Uh, observed year life safety issues, and again, that was the intent of the rapid assessment that I talked about before, we wanted to come and make sure there's no life safety concerns. Which there isn't, um, it has great Main Street appeal, uh, it has great Main Street frontage, but no real appeal. Uh, and this building lacks the area for parking needs, desires for future growth, it also lacks the growth expansion uh needs from what the city needs for City Hall. Uh, police, while a functional building, uh, again, it remains a temporary facility. Uh, and will not uh support future growth as well in the programming exercises that we've we've come up with. Visitor Center, uh, here we are, a great street presence building, a welcome to feel of old Duval. Well, not fully accessible, we know that, uh, it's and it has limited occupancy, it's still well-functioning as a visitor center and historical society, and of course, we're using it. Here tonight for the limited uh use. And and again, I think there's our community rec center, we we might have called this. Differently uh throughout the process, and I know the question about what we call it, but. For the instance of the tonight, we're still calling it Community Rec Center. Uh, the functionality use of this building is, again, considered seasonal. Uh, for search space and city needs, uh, but and its long-term use by the city is still undetermined. Uh, we're going to suggest some things tonight, again, with a new group, but uh, that too, parking is extremely limited there, and there's, there's some this. Historic, if you will, information used from the property inspection reports that we referenced quite a bit. Uh, for that building and it made some pretty exceptional assumptions, I'll get to that later. And then the public works yard, what we call is what's out back here, the shelter, or we need the storage. Uh, of material storage as well as some offices down below. Uh, it's probably the building that we consider is in the worst condition, meaning uh it's a pre-engineered metal building. That has a very limited uh seismic uh capacity, uh, and there's. There's what's called uh some moment frames that are missing in that should there be a seismic seismic event, it's not a life-saving issue right now, but. Uh, it itself uh can't expand and, you know, wouldn't recommend putting money into that uh to fix it. Uh, not to mention that it also the space below the shelter um. Is not conducive to an occupied space, again, we shouldn't be having offices under a shelter like that, this doesn't mean code. Next slide.
Oh, question, sorry.
Yes.
You mentioned seismic uh concerns, uh, I didn't see that specifically covered in the criteria, can you talk about that in general terms?
Yeah.
How that fits in with the criteria that you consider?
The term structural in the criteria was part of that. Uh, so when our structural consultant, uh, maybe his observation, his report goes into more depth. About each of those and you should see structural in the matrix.
I I do, um. I, and I did, I didn't tell you, but I read through every, every one, but I didn't see that mentioned. I didn't specifically see seismic concern, you just mentioned, or earthquake concerns, mentioned any anywhere. In there, like I said, I may have missed it.
Yeah, no, we didn't, I would probably, I'll say, we didn't call out specific seismic issues, we called out just structural. Issues in general, and then our structural engineer. Goes into more detail and misreported inside, so we don't have specific seismic. Quantitative, you know, pieces to each other.
You get that in the end?
Uh, you will get, you'll get the detail in his report, which, which addresses seismic issues, yes.
Okay, because I think that will be something that not only we, the council, are concerned about, but the main residents town analysis.
Yes.
Things, we want to make sure we still have some functioning facilities in case of the major seismic event.
Oh, yeah, and part of the dialogue I hopefully have tonight too is that. You know, the city hall isn't set up to be an emergency operations center and I would not, again, our recommendations would be to retrofit that city hall to do that. Because it would be so cost prohibitive to do that, uh, but that's the type of dialogue that I hope we have, and then here's more of it.
One, one other question just running around this slide, and and again, it's. I know there's been some change in the council in terms of the report, but. You know, in terms of the description, the city hall in particular talks about, you know, use, it's a use for for needs or no inherent safety issues. I know in other parts of the work, there's the needs analysis and sort of the work. Work plan to determine future growth needs, but I was curious, when you assess from a facility condition, is it purely physical condition? Or that obviously the the current facilities are, you know, staffed on top of one another, there there's minimal.
Yeah.
Space for agility or movement. That wasn't called out specifically or that I found, but it's reflected in the future, but not necessarily in the assessment of their current.
Yes, and then let me, what's been a bit difficult because of our task and the way we set. Way we set the project up was that. And if I can be in hindsight, we should have done a full separate facilities assessment, sort of phase one of everything, and then phase two with that design. That's simply stated, I'm saying that simply because we are getting a little mixed up in what we've done for the assessments, the physical assessments that we've done have focused on. The structural integrity and things like that, that said, the programming part of this is is planning for the program.
I just, you you answered my question, I was trying to connect the dots and the reality is, they're not really, it wasn't really designed that way, so. Some of the scenes that are appearing are because of the wind analysis was.
And I, that's why I apologize for that, because again, if I were to do this again, we would separate it and now the little clearer, you know, that's sort of why this is. A bit scattered all over, because you're getting a little bit of everything at the same time. This is just a, this is the in-depth uh. Facility condition index, so the rapid matrix that I showed you was a quick walkthrough, we take that. And put that into this document, which then moves the arrow essentially based on the deficiency rating. So the the rapid walkthrough, again, I know this is like just a bunch of data that kind of, okay, just bear with me, uh, but. That has a value that was, that makes a deficiency rating for each building. And then we just simply look at it relative to the percent required of replacement, and again, these are just numbers that. We have chosen to do, you you can still adjust these things, but again, this is our observation of being able to. Uh, predict a percentage uh and put it in the chart and make the facility uh. Arrow move, so literally in the matrix itself, if your building was in excellent shape, we'd be in green. And again, good yellow, fair, salmon colored and poor, and the definition of poor is as if, as if you get. Efficiency ratings that add up that become greater than thirty percent and that pushes it into the red. Again, that's not saying this building is falling down, that's just giving you an overall observed condition of what's happening with the building. I've only projected City Hall, each of these has the same, the same uh condition out, or outcomes major, but I'm going to be showing City Hall here tonight. Next slide, which I think is a pause, questions, questions on that, they know I'm dumping it a lot, I feel like I'm coming.
Are we going through each building?
No, we are, we are going to go through the five buildings. To talk about, uh.
Visioning.
Yes, the visioning, yes, but we're not going to go through each building like this tonight.
I have a quick question then, if we're not, um, I just, looking at the numbers in here, there's just some puzzlers, um, like, for example, the rec center. Says the HVAC, we need to spend a quarter of a million dollars on the HVAC, the police. We need to spend a quarter of a million dollars on the HVAC, the police says. Building, we should spend a half a million on the HVAC system. Other buildings are showing like sixty thousand, I, I'm just trying to understand. When that, you know, greatly influences the cost to maintain a building, it's, we're projecting we need to spend a half a million dollars on it.
Yeah, and that, that again, still means we find some more. It is, that cost again, is, is square footage cost, it's not the fact that you would have to redo the entire HVAC system. It's based only on the quantity itself, meaning the square footage of the building.
Well, the square footage costs are different depending on the building, and so that's what I was saying, is that. Like the rec center and the police center, the per square footage cost is so high. That once you multiply it by the square feet, I mean. Half a million dollars for the HVAC for the police station, I don't know. Like, we're a quarter million for the rec center?
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah, so Daniel hasn't done that cost part of it, and that is something that I. I really did a deep dive into those two, yes, and then so there are a bunch of. Outstanding stuff that we're working on with the cost, and that is exactly something. That we all know this too, because even for City Hall, we saw the HVAC, and we're like, we know it's not going to cost that much, because. We have a project that's addressing it, so it's a very. Big wag right now.
I just don't want to be trying.
It's going to get addressed.
The numbers that.
No, we're not, not, not numbers right now, okay, no, that will be addressed though. Yes.
Thank you. Next slide. And then, so capital improvement outcomes, again, moving into this, I don't want to belittle this more, because I think we've talked about. So far and before, but thi- this is the actual programming document that. Again, we've got to through steps, we got through by talking with the departments of the city. And again, Tom, again, Tom Beck was, was the lead programmer in all this. And the important parts here, again, I tried to highlight was what you just see in the highlighted blue. Which you'll see in the next slide. Which Jin, again, gives you, and Amy, this is what I was trying to get at with the projections, this is again. Based on the full-time equivalent of FTE staff, so. It's the future projections with, when your population, for instance, reaches twelve thousand. And that, that top column here, you see eight point two, ten, and twelve thousand, that's based on. Staff needs per thousand. In your population, and when you reach twelve thousand, that's the projection we've, we've made so far for the growth. And that number again is what we began with. That number can change again, depending on. You know, how far out you want to look or not, and Tom, I don't know if you can weigh in on. Where year-wise, right, whether or not. Are you there, Tom?
Yeah, I'm here.
Would you like to weigh in on that a little, just so that everybody can understand that?
Sure, we worked with the departments, department directors to come up with these staff projections against those. Three. Population levels, and we find population levels are more useful than years. Because they really dictate what, what happens when it happens. And then the projections for the eight point two thousand, which you are now, this is what you should have. Not what you have for each department as we work through it. And then as we came up with the, the net square feet, that's the, the size that you're using within the building. Then we projected gross building requirement, which is the outside skin, and that's where we handle. Add in mechanical and access and stairways and bathrooms and everything else. At the bottom of that chart, you can see the parking requirements, now we're looking at parking requirements for each department. Including city vehicles and staff. And visitors to each department, what those would be. That gives us our total square footage, that gives us our total acres in sight. Based on whether you're looking at a one-story or a two-story or a single or a combined facility.
And, and then back to, if I can pull it back to some of the questions relative to space. Again, Tom's standards are based on, again. A very, you know, thought-through. Conditions of working, right, so again, this is just an example of the level of. What the space planning needs would be, it's an open office plan, and we have numerous. Pages of what those layouts could be, and so all of that data is taken from those standards, and that's how you project the growth.
And. And one of the things that we, you, you've mentioned E O C. Mayor doesn't even have a desk for me or anybody else at City Hall anymore, conference room converted to offices. And one of the critical improvements that we need is an emergency operations center, so with these facility needs. Capital needs, how does that play in, is that something we add on in the process of finalizing the report, or is that something? That is going to be part of the next steps?
I, I, you know, again, the large planning thinking, the, the future planning, the potential for a new City Hall, it's an automatic. Need that we build into the whole process, handle costs. Your new City Hall has, has to be an E O C, I mean, we look at it that way. Where, where it gets difficult, what I was trying to say is trying to retrofit existing. And you guys, I, again, not knowing all the details, but I know you're doing. Half decent job trying to make E O C light spaces now. You know, in different buildings, and Lewis, I don't know if you want to elaborate.
We do, we do utilize the fire department right now, but. Structurally speaking, in order to bring any of our existing buildings up to the code requirement, structure, the structural requirement. To be called an E O C is, like Daniel said, extremely cost prohibitive. It's really, really, really expensive. So that's why, when you're looking at buying a building, new facility, it's automatically built into the, to the structural component.
I will answer the one question about what you have versus what you need. We do functional programming, so if we know what your position is and what your activity is, then we build all the space in that. Projection that you need, not what you have, but what you should have in order to make it work. So we work through every staff position based on what you functionally do. Then we add in all the equipment, the conference rooms, the storage rooms, the. The copy rooms and everything else, so there are detailed sheets on each department, and you can look at those detailed worksheets and see just how comprehensive it is.
So I just had a question. The, most of the departments look like they're growing, you know, they're taking into consideration there's some scale. As you, you know, you don't need two directors, it's just because you gained in size, you know, I mean, there's certainly a ton of the scale. The one department that kind of stood out to me is the police department. Is showing needing a staff of twenty-six. And I think that's about the size of the staff that provides services for both Snoqualmie and Ruffin. So combined, those are huge, I mean, substantially more than. An estimated twelve thousand residents, plus they have huge commercial areas, you know, you want a truck stop. You know, I mean, just a, a completely different scenario to a bedroom community, and so. That puzzles me a little bit, I, I remembered, and I'm trying to get a hold of the report, I requested it, that there was an operational assessment, I believe, that was done about two thousand seventeen. That did talk about, you know, staffing needs as we grow, and I will call sitting in on a council meeting, a COW. Presentation where they, you know, talked about the results, and someone had asked, you know. Are we going to have to increase staffing as we grow substantially, and I remember the answer was, well. The staffing is kind of based on the number of officers you need to be on staff at a certain amount of time, and even as the population grew. You wouldn't necessarily need to increase that, because you just need, you know, a certain number of officers. On patrol, at a certain time, even if you gain more population, it wouldn't necessarily increase that substantially, so. And I'm trying to get a hold of that report, right, it, it just puzzles me a little bit why we would need a police force the size of. What is needed for two much larger cities than us, if we're barely. Increasing.
Tom, can you respond to that at all?
Sure, we worked with each department, and we looked at what their current staffing is, and not just the numbers, but what each staff position does. And as they projected out to these different numbers, ten thousand or twelve thousand, each department director, including the police chief. Forecast how the changes, how many they would need in each of those staff positions. Well, certainly in police, it's, it's the patrol that grows. But it can also be what other functions you do as well, do you have a community service officer? Are you doing any kind of traffic, are you doing any kind of detective work, are you doing any kind of drug work? Are you holding cells in the, in the station, are you running them to the county jail and so on? But we defer to the chief or to the department director to give us those first cuts. Then those first cuts are run past your city administration. Each city is different. I did the police department for Toquilla and the police department for Linden. And they have the same population, but Toquilla has a hundred thousand people come into the city every day. So it's not just based on population, it's also based on what you do. And what your threat assessments are of your city.
Yeah, I mean, I, taking that as an example, I mean, we have much less traffic than a city with I ninety having through it. You know, I mean, and that's two cities combined, I don't know, I just.
Right, yeah.
We're not really, you know, what Snoqualmie and Ruffin are, just our proximity to. Everything, I don't know, I'm struggling with it.
Only for the chief, but I also just mentioned that we are isolated, and it takes a long time for other departments to get to us, so there's less opportunity for backup. In a time sensitive situation, not being close to those freeways. Just, you know, for example, we have had. Chases and, and searches where we've had to have helicopters out here, and our police couldn't get here. Because of traffic, if we had more officers on staff at that time, it may not have been as big of an issue, which is likely to happen when we have a population. So, chief.
Yeah, I choose to block people all day, the report you're referring to is a twenty seventeen study, which is six years old. Police services have changed tremendously in the last six years, especially in the last eighteen months, so. As you say, we're going to need special units as far as people who are pre-engaged in community, we're going to be trapped, we already need traffic, we've been flooding, we have current. We don't have a traffic, we're going to be, have state units like that, and other special units. So that's, I took all that into consideration when we were sitting down for the study, but the stuff we're going to need as a general population. And forward as far as getting the terminals and every school, getting, you know, addition, addition, and stuff like that, that's needed for a city that's that size. And we are isolated out here.
I just wanted to chime in, I think, you know, for the sake of what we're looking at tonight, I, at least in my mind. You know, devoting more space to one department or to a building, you know, doesn't necessarily mean like future positions or anything like that, but. I struggle, you know, there's always a balance there, you want to make sure you're not making a gigantic building that could never be filled, but you. Don't want to also make a super small building that just barely fits what you have, so it's finding the middle ground, and I think that's the interesting thing to me tonight that I'm looking at and. Looking at these numbers and the information you're giving us and trying to figure out what's the right balance, and, and hopefully as we progress through these slides, it becomes a little more clear.
That's fair, yeah.
Uh, one more question over here.
Yes, I'd also just say, I mean, this is also taken into consideration with the police department, that that's twenty-four hour. Shifts, right, so you're actually thirteen, I mean, if you're thinking like you could just have it. You're thirteen and thirteen versus like some of the other numbers compared against the other number, when you look at them. It's actually. You know what I mean, there's actually double or triples than, you know, the shifts work across that same number of employees, correct, correct, yeah.
Next slide. So, just to summarize, summation again. Capital improvement outcomes for future needs, again, trying to just highlight what you saw on that chart. And I won't repeat all of what you just saw there, but. This, this at least summarized it, and more importantly, it was trying to summarize the square footage, so again, you take all of that. All of that data, and, and Tom was talking about parking stalls and all that, and we come up with square footages of growth for buildings. And that's the physical part that we're putting together for all this data, that's how we got. To be able to do the planning studies that you're, you're seeing, we were able to at least get square footages. And use that information to create the planning studies. That said, again. Things like the police, you know, this includes the Sally Court, for instance, you know, it's not taking the Sally Court out, but that's just including that as part of the recommended growth. And the public works, the public works, we know also. Right now, we need to finesse that a little more, but it's also taking into account. Employees that are going to be out of the wastewater, that's the plant, and are moving, you know, so. We need to finesse that number a little bit as well, and I just wanted to mention that. Again, total parking stalls, Tom, you might want to just, I know that that number was. Again, based on a seventy-five percentile or seventy-five percent, I mean, you just elaborate a little more on, on parking in general.
Sure, one of the questions of, of staff parking is what percent of the staff you provide parking for. In a, in Bellevue, for example, where you've had bus service and you're going to have light rail. Their ratio of stalls per staff is something like twenty-five percent, they're not going to provide more than. Twenty-five percent of the staff parking spaces, because they know they have these other transportation modes able to be utilized to get there. But you're a suburban city, or even a rural community, and you don't have, your staff, employees don't have the access to other modes of transportation. So we set your parking ratio, I think, at seventy-five percent of staff. But that's a policy decision that council needs to make about just how, what that. Ratio should be and what, whether or not it's equitable. Now, for visitors and for city vehicles, it's a hundred percent. Your real policy questions is what percent of staff you provide parking for.
Yeah, so that can change too. So.
Did you say visitors, is that taken into account in this report?
Yes, you're not seeing that listed here, but it is back in the program document itself. Questions, other questions? Next slide. That's what this is, questioning. Okay. Next slide. Ah, and then this, this again is back to the number crunching, the cost analysis outcomes, and what I said before too, operational work then. Is still coming, but again, I'm not going to belittle this, but just again, to show you. And again, to relate to what Jennifer was saying too, was just the fact that. This chart shows you the remaining useful light, and that, that again, this is an observation. These are based on industry standards, we use a lot of, a lot, we use some data that tells us what that standard would be. And you literally just sum it up and take the average. And that's, again, based on our observations of the ratings of the quality assessment index. And then most importantly, what I think you're seeing is, again, we've given quantity by building square footage. And then the unit cost of the component. And then the cost in dollars, and this was again, in twenty twenty-two dollars. If you were to do everything that we're saying right at this point in time, that's the cost we're saying would be to renovate a building. And again, this isn't growth, this isn't future. Program, this is just to fix. Fix, repair, maintain, take care of something, and you're just spending all that money right now. That's all that number is, this is the matrix that. We're working on the risk about and trying to say, we can spread these numbers out over time. And that's where it becomes a live document, so you can play with that number. And again, spread it out per component, we'll just do that all the time, but we have to start somewhere. To show you the next workshop numbers to say. This is the cost that we're, where we start from to say, maintain or renovate. Retain, build new, you have, you have to start some, so. That gives the breakdown essentially of that. Next slide, please. And I, I don't know, again, I don't know how far you have seen the overall. Outcome for the future growth, that this slide is about tonight, I'm pleased to show you that. But, again, simply taking the work we've done thus far for a. Combined City Hall police. A new freestanding police station, and then a, again, revised or new public works yard. And that's what, what you're seeing here for the cost analysis outcomes of those. And again, each of those would try to at least list out all the components that would get you to that. Now. Note that, again, these are construction costs and soft cuts. They're not project costs. So pieces that are still missing are things like furniture and equipment and stuff like that. That's, again, a very detailed analysis that would come with design. But this gets you a ballpark, again. But this gets you a ballpark again of what construction costs would be for these types of facilities. Yes.
Uh, I was just asking, in terms of the more of the sort of the unknown site location, you just picked essentially a. A a rough square, there's obviously a lot of variance around way of acquisition and other things based on market conditions.
Yes, and and when we get to the workshop, we made some assumptions on the cost of a site. Like to purchase a site, so. This is like.
Yeah, your uh cost for parking, that's more than just the. A gas ball parking.
Yes, and this and this this particular setting, again, this is a garage essentially, this is a garage underneath. Police underneath city hall. Built back here behind us. Um, still keeping this in place and connecting from the street, that's what that scenario is.
So another question, in your, in the package here, you showed four options, right? Now you're only showing three.
Uh, yes, the fourth is, um. No.
Looking that potentially doing out at the Jordi Barnes then now we're supposed to speak in office.
No, that's still this, that's still this, uh. It's I'm slipping my mind that the fourth is, uh, we do have one more, but it's not, it's not a full. That was a freestanding city hall. But we'll talk.
Oh, freestanding signal, that was.
Yes.
Yeah, so one of the things I found confusing with the options in general was they're not independent. Uh, for instance, you'd be able to give you choose top option or the two option A. Uh, you also need option, the the last option, because you have to relocate public works.
Yes.
Somewhere, so you could make that more clear.
Okay.
In there, because at first glance, it clearly, well, I can have, you know, one of these four options, no, you can't.
No, you're 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 spot on, and the the work that still needs to come. And that was more detailed than for than for tonight, right?
Yeah.
It was to hear what you think about the assets and then the decision tree. Is more complex to say, we're combining these two. We're not here, uh, I actually brought a a hand copy of that decision tree because. It's so complex, but we don't want to get into that, but you're spot on. To know that you still need that.
Good, good, yeah, but I'd like to say you have to stare at it a little bit.
Yes.
To come to that conclusion.
Yes.
Um, the other thing I found. Confusing, um. I'm hearing with Silvio's argument, using, you 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 have one paragraph, you thought you thought about the quality and so on.
Yeah.
And rating things, uh, what was it, five three one, five three one, that doesn't appear anywhere else if not. Uh, but that confused me a little bit as far as the uh. The building facility condition, because that's like, well, a separate thing.
Well, we'll clarify that, I think, side by side, because what I wasn't very good job tonight was it went from rapid assessment to that other.
It did, oh, yes, and there's a, yeah.
A translation of.
Yes, clarification on that would be dope.
Yes. Okay. Next slide. Question. Or did that, okay, we did that all right, next one. Okay, so how much time do we have?
Uh, about ten fifteen minutes tops.
Okay, all right, well, at least. Uh, Tom, uh, this is the visioning part here, and again. Uh, this is a a decision tree, a simple decision tree, I hope it's, well, again, we're not looking for just big decisions tonight. We're looking to get this out in front of you and have discussion, but the idea here is to review the asset outcomes. Uh, talk about Philly's action plan, the decision tree, and then our next steps for an approach to make some decisions. Uh, and each of these now, uh, these five buildings, what we're trying to show. Now, you city halls example is retain and renovate. That that is one side of the column and the other is to build new. And like I said, we have, we have to start somewhere. And to do that, we've come up with an existing land value, existing building value, and then the total renovations at this point in time. If you were to do that, like I said, that all I want. That'll get you a total investment. And then I've listed remaining useful life, um. I think Arissa was asking me to, uh, can we give some idea if we did all the renovations? Can we tell you what the remaining useful life would be in a facility? We can't, I don't have that tonight, but we can do that as well. And then build new was again, the probable land value. Plus the new construction costs, again, from cost estimating exercises that we've had. Less the sale, and this is again, if you were to sell the property, for instance, of city hall. Uh, I'm giving, putting a value to that of what we think you can get for that sale. And then listing the total investment there, and then, of course, it's a new bill. Most of these would be fifty to seventy five years uh in remaining, yeah, remaining on useful life. Um, and then we've begun a list of pros and cons. Uh, the pros and cons again are listed for each, again, that would like to have that dialogue tonight with each of these a little bit more if we could. Uh, for city hall in particular, uh, pros of a new build. Of course, would be all city departments are one building. There's a minimal, again, maintenance for the few thirty years. Uh, you can stay, you can uh take advantage of the sale of a prime downtown franchise with private tax revenue returns. There's improved functionality to the city itself, city staff as well as new. Uh, new public needs like flexible space. Um, again, a city hall that has cooling and warming needs. Uh, again, overnight shelter, again, I'm being very creative, again, this is just off the top of our. Uh, suggestion heads, and of course, the emergency operations center as part of that.
Do we have this in the package?
It was in the. Position that I emailed out.
Uh, Tom, do you want to elaborate here at all?
Uh, well, the one question I have is under renovation requirements. That's to renovate the existing building, it's not to expand it.
Yes.
So in other words, you could spend two point six million to keep the exact same space you have, which is about a third of what you need. So you really can't compare the two point six million to the nine point four million. The nine point four million gives you all you need by twelve thousand population. So the the two point six. Even though we did not project increasing your existing buildings to meet your needs. Those aren't really apples to apples.
Yeah.
The other issue is. At the end of twenty years, if you took this approach, you more than likely would be facing. A major renovation requirement, again, given the nature of the structure itself. You're still going to have uh exterior materials and roofing materials and and those types of things that. Are going to be short cycled versus we've said seventy five years on a new building. Uh, look at the library, the library is a seventy five year building. The kinds of materials they use, the amount of maintenance is required, the utility costs and everything else, it's a sustainable building. So when we say seventy five years, working on a building that's sustainable, not only for material, but is cheaper to operate. And those operational costs are not included at this point.
On the dialogue, the the dialogue you just said, I think it's important for us to see that, again, for our residents to see that as well, so. Since we're not doing an apple town comparison here, you know, in the first class, it might appear to be so, but uh. That perhaps somehow elaborating on the pros and cons, what you just said would be would be useful. Um, I I like to say, I think those are really some key points you just you just made.
Yeah, to clarify, clarify, it's not apples for apple, yeah.
Just one question to you, because I may be important to council, is this exercise gives a population of twelve thousand? Which could be in ten years, fifteen years, but how are we looking out generationally?
Yeah, uh, Tom, can you uh react to that question?
Well, your your uh twelve thousand population is what your comp planet projects in twenty years. Now, um, certainly you could grow faster than that, but to grow faster than that, you would probably be looking at different land capacities and different boundaries. The assumptions that are built into your comp plan. Um. I think the issue would be looking at your community, what is? What is your realistic cap on just how much you can grow and still re- remain developed? And not become a a much bigger, um, urban area.
That, because we're, you know, working on our comp plan for this next ten year period. And depending on what the legislature does over the next couple of years with the annexations, affordable housing products, all of these things. This could actually get skewed, and so I do think. We may want to put some thought about what that really could look like, Tom, even if it's not part of this exercise now. I don't, I want to make sure that we're building something that might fit.
The question would be, each of those buildings grows differently in different areas. If you're looking at the police department, the greatest growth is in locker and evidence storage. So the building can be designed so those two components can grow. Beyond, say, what your twelve thousand footprint looks like. Um, and and that the 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 other rest of the functions in that building would relatively remain. For a longer period of time. If you're looking at city hall, the question would be. How much activity is going to occur in that city hall? Are you combining all the departments? Are you putting in engineering, you're bringing in police? And then the the biggest growth in those areas are what we call the common areas. How much conferencing are you going to be doing? How much uh storage are you going to be doing? What kind of council chamber are you going to have? So again, the design of those spaces can be done in such a way that they can be be expanded beyond your basic footprint. And we always do that regardless of what we think the build out uh ultimately is. Uh, in your public works area. Uh, your biggest issue is equipment storage. And that's where the biggest growth is, it's not so much in the in the crew room and in the lockers and so on, which we can accommodate, it's. How much equipment are you going to house? Is it going to be inside buildings or out on the yard? How big does the yard need to be if you're uh at some point going to expand beyond what you exponentially expect? So when you get into the actual planning and the picking of the properties and the beginning of the designs of the buildings. Those are the kinds of considerations we usually use to make sure that you have a sustainable. Facility, that you don't block yourself in. Another issue that's kind of common in the design is stay away from partitioned. Designated spaces. Build a box, an expandable box, because the way we are, we work changes. The kinds of activities that are in it need to be changed, and so the internal configurations can change without. Uh, dramatically altering the building. The best example I can give you there is Kent. They designed some thirty years ago, a brick, uh, city halls, a beautiful building, but all the interior partitions in the building are brick. So there's just nothing you could do to expand it. So it basically became a showpiece and the building they built next to it. Was kind of a flexible spec uh office building built by a developer that they took over. Because they needed the ability to reconfigure and reorient how they work and so on. So what the things I just mentioned as the principles and the things we use in the design phase. And are the kinds of questions you should raise in that phase? That's your question?
Yeah. Mayor, anything?
I was just going to say for the group and staff, and as we move forward with um site selection and sign, uh, actually, you know, moving forward with the building. Um, to add on to Director Thomas's point, um, it does look like middle housing bills are going to force us basically have unbridled growth, they're going to pass. So I don't think, you know, right off the top with what's going on, I don't think that twelve thousand is the realistic population target, and I think we're at a minimum of fifteen thousand. Uh, potentially twenty with forced annexations. Um, and uh, there's also requirements coming down for what we will have to have on site to. Being a wildland urban interface by our community as well, um, as far as our infrastructure and our city facilities, that's coming forward that it'll it'll get to. So I want to make sure before this report is finalized, that we're taking, having discussions internally and taking some of this stuff into account. And having at least back the napkin projections before we embark on the site selection process to ensure that we are. Building that facility for the next fifty to seventy five years, um, and have that plan and plan set up to maintain and replace it when the time comes.
That's fair.
Now, I should mention one other thing that is affecting building space, and that's remote work. And we've done a lot of analysis and studies on what remote work would do to particularly for to municipal facilities. And if your staff. Is going to operate in the building at least three days a week. Which is what most have been going to, you're not going to save that much space. So you can't assume the remote work is just automatically going to cut the building size down. It changes the way you work, it changes when the staff comes in, but you don't per se end up with smaller buildings.
We're running short on time, so, and I know you still have about ten slides left, um, so. I'm curious if we should continue this in the council meeting, I don't know how long they're able to stay, or if. I, yeah, I don't know, so I just want to pose that to the mayor and the ministry.
Do you want to stay, I guess, do you have time to stay during the meeting?
We we could, or again, if. I don't know, is this the first time anyone's seen this?
Yes.
I was going to say, maybe it's important that you just absorb this a little.
Okay.
And I, we've had a lot of honestly, good dialogue here already. We could, again. Maybe flip right to Tom's slideshow, again, I don't know if we need to. But to me, that was about showing you guys some other examples, we're not trying to.
Yeah.
Force feed you. Um. Want to do, but I wanted Tom to at least show you some. More local examples of what uh a combined city hall police would be like. Um, if if that's okay, I'd rather.
Do you have this evening?
Yes, 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 I'm asking, could we do that?
Do you want to adjourn and take a quick break and bring this back, and when the council meeting starts?
Okay, Tom, is that okay with you?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, well, thank you for all of that, yes, it is a lot, I know, we're all going to have a lot of questions and we're discussing later. Um, so we'll continue with this in the council meeting, we'll go ahead and adjourn at six fifty seven, so everyone can take a quick break. Um, and we're also going to have to move the setback projections for their C M planners to the council meeting as well.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I think this is the first.
I think this is the first time.
Duplicate stair rooms, duplicate storage rooms, janitors areas and so on. That aren't aren't functional and don't really uh meet the mission of the building. That's true in some of your existing buildings. There's a lot of non-functional space. So it's difficult at times to take the the measurement of the exterior of city hall compared to what you really need. Next building please. This is the fight public safety building. Um in this case, this is the police department, their courtroom and their holding facilities, they're separated. Uh the main build on the on the uh diagram, you can see how we configured the courtroom. And courtrooms really have multiple entrances and exits and you have to design them for whoever's. Uh being accessed where there's the judge or defendant, or it's a jury, or it's the public. So that was the module used in the design of this building. Um it's a pretty functional um. Efficient building, it has room for expansion, as you can see the way the the uh basic um. Footprints of the billionaire range, you can expand in each end of that building um directly. And you could also expand that Woodville uh building by expanding down that internal street. Next please. This is Gig Harbor City Hall Police and Court Campus, and it's actually on a park. If you look at the diagram on the right. The whole um kind of rectangle of there with the trees in the south end of the. Or the bottom part of the site is park, as is the wooded area up in the upper uh left. And so this was designed to accommodate each of these functions, but in a way that they could interact and you can see there are almost. Uh individual modules that are stacked up there between City Hall, the police and then and the municipal court. They are also expandable to some extent. Uh by growing to the will be to the left. And the very front of it is a uh comments commons area that. Um is designed to accommodate juvenile soccer uh clinics, so it's a community uh space per se. Next example, please. This is Lakewood City Hall. Can't remember what the what the city hall was in is one of the commercial buildings that was in the former mall. And this was designed specifically to accommodate City Hall Police and Court. It's a two-story building for the City Hall portion, a one-story for the police and court. Uh in this instance, if you're looking at the uh aerial on the right. The top small little box is the policing court. The two-story uh bigger uh rectangle there is the City Hall. At the very south end of City Hall. Which you can see partially by looking at the photos where the council chambers and the annex. And the conference rooms are located again, pulled away from the main portion of the City Hall. In this case, it also has an internal street or access, it runs along. What would be the right side of that long rectangle, so as you walk down that there are counters that access each of the different departments. And on the other side of that hall are the conference spaces which are outside uh of the department spaces per se. Next please, this is Puyallup. And this is their City Hall, they have separate buildings for their police, they had a jail for a while and you don't have that anymore. And then their court is um run as part of their uh. Out uh it's run outside of this particular facility. This was actually a joint, if you look at the diagram on the upper right. The look the rectangle that's kind of colored in is City Hall. As you can see, it's a four-story building and the box is just across the what's the aisle from that. Will be future mixed-use housing. And in between that is a parking deck. The parking deck was jointly developed by uh the City Hall. And by the developer of what's going to be the mixed-use housing. This was actually a design build project. The developer built the facility. Based on the program criteria and based on the um. Design analysis that we had, the bottom floor of City Hall is retail. Because this is in the downtown and this fronts directly across from their premier uh premier pioneer park. One of the issues in any city halls, where do you place uh the council chambers and the conference rooms? And in this case, they elected to put it on the top floor. So you can see the top floor has bigger windows and a viewpoint and one of the reasons they wanted it there. Was to be able to view the historical city park which is across the way. And across from that park is the library and on the other corner is their senior center. And on another corner is our multi-use building, so the. Park block is surrounded by city facilities and that's one of the reasons that they wanted to have that vista and viewpoint. The next example is Burlington City Hall. Uh there's a City Hall Police and Court Campus. The City Hall is a rectangle on the aerial in the bottom right-hand corner. It's a two-story building. If you look across the parking lot and the top of the um aerial, that's the police. Police and court and fire station. I'm sorry, that's a police and fire station. And the square uh rectangle on the bottom left-hand corner, that's the policing court. So courts not in the fire stations, we're talking about three buildings here. The police and court. The fire station and then on the bottom right-hand corner is uh City Hall. They like the idea of clustering them on the campus. Because they do have the, they do like the idea of creating civic presence presence. There isn't a real downtown per se to Burlington, there's a historical district which didn't have any building capacity. And so they have located this to provide kind of a the campus context to the town's development. Those are some of the examples, um what I'm trying to show you is there's. There uh in this example, it's a campus arrangement, separate buildings. Some of the buildings are a combination City Hall and Police and Court. Uh some of them were designed to uh. Be located within a downtown and some are designed to create their presence independent, but closer length to what the city fabric is. Any questions on those examples? A couple of design principles, I think they'll be worth mentioning, we've talked about them before. These are very efficient buildings, they're designed to to reflect what the cities need, what the departments need and what the functions are. In some cases, they are multiple-story when they're in downtown locations and the square footage requires it. They only have about fifteen percent of what we call nonusable space because they were designed and built to meet those requirements. The internal spaces are very um flexible. We tried to control not having too many fixed rooms so that could adapt over time. And all of them uh separate what you might call the public spaces from. The city staff spaces, so their security as well as a division of where um. Activity and noise occurs and and a number of them in some cases have pulled the meeting facilities and the council chambers. Away from the the departmental uh components of the building so that they're usable after hours. By the public, by other users. Any uh they are all seventy-five-year buildings. Any questions on that?
Thank you, John. Council, thank you, it was again, the intent of that was to sort of sum up our workshop with some visioning ideas. Uh to combine City Hall Police and. Uh you'll hear from us again, the process is continuing, but we'll sum it up there tonight just to show you that. Uh inspiration, inspiration.
Well, thank you very much, um we're there, Ron, it looks like.
Yeah, there's no additional, you know, questions, I think it's nice to have some examples out, we see we've got. Lots of things we're thinking about as council in terms of the the. Allies of the town and the things we want to emphasize that we need to obviously discuss in one start.
Thanks, thank you, thank you very much. Um and we'll go ahead and move on to our next uh which is setback projections with Troy Davis.
Great, uh good evening, council and mayor, or mayor and council, so I got that a little backwards. Tonight, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about um setback projections and some of the issues. That we're seeing in the community as neighborhoods build out. Um so first, can everyone see the screen okay or the PowerPoint presentation? Good to go. Perfect. Uh so uh first we want to touch base on, you know, what is a setback? And essentially a setback is the distance uh between a building or a non-building structure. And.
Sure, I will watch a minute, um our turn, I guess, pop in the chat, it looks like our our screen might not be sharing.
So uh thi- this is now sharing right now, um and so I can see it, I just couldn't see the last one. And then Troy, your presentation was on kind of the inverse presentation mode, just just so you know.
Oh inverse?
But uh when when you hit the presentation, there's a a setting where it can go full screen, it was showing like your notes and everything.
Oh, okay, whoops, uh. Does this, does this work okay in this format?
You can start in the presentation mode.
Okay.
Jenny's harder when you're on a single screen, so I have it up here. Troy, we can share it from here, if it's here, so you can see the audience.
Okay, so I mean, let me. Escape here, sorry. Do I need to have it up for you to share, or are you showing from?
We're sharing already, Troy.
Okay.
Or, hold on just a second.
Let me try that one.
And then I'll just need presentation.
Okay, uh is this. Fly, there we go, okay. Disappeared.
There happens some changes, we'll soon maintain something to make it. Only challenging to find our base area again.
There we go, it's back. There we go.
Alright. We'll start over here, um good evening, mayor and city council. Uh my name is Troy Davis, I'm a senior planner here at the city of Duval. Uh tonight, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about setback projections. And some of the issues that we're seeing as um new neighborhoods get built. Uh particularly as our newer neighborhoods which are on much tighter, smaller lots um get built, so uh next slide please. So first, just taking a look at what is a setback, so basically a setback is the distance between a building. Or a non-building structure and the property line. Uh so. City codes across all jurisdictions have uh setback requirements for individual lots. Uh and as you can see in this diagram here. Is it forms a basically a prism uh building envelope uh per se to which a building uh must. Be situated uh on a lot. Uh so we have our rear setback, our front setback, our side setbacks, our maximum building height. Um and what we get at the end of the day is the area that uh the home can occupy. Uh next slide please. So what are the purposes of the setback, um there's quite a few. Uh we learned from the Industrial Revolution in the eighteen hundreds that setbacks play an incredibly important role. Um in the development of our cities. Uh sets allow for light and air to get in, uh which is ventilation. Uh they allow for um water and utilities, uh space between buildings, um access. Uh they allow green space um and also work to help with fire prevention. Uh next slide please. So then the question becomes, what is a projection? Uh and a projection is just as the name uh alludes to, it's a projection of of a protrusion, I should say. Into a required setback. So you have your setback and then a portion of the building uh extends into that setback. Um and then in regards to building height. Uh you know, it could be the roof, uh for instance, so here in the city of Duval. We calculate building height on the distance between, you know, the ground and and the roof eve. Uh so roofs generally aren't included within that prism. Uh they're they're kind of an appendage, so. Uh projections are all those portions of the building that extend into required setbacks. Next. Uh so why are projections allowed in codes, why do cities allow these to begin with? Why don't we just say, hey, you've got to meet all these setbacks and we'll be good to go? Uh well, homes, I like to compare a little bit uh as if you were going on a hike, because I like to hike. And when you go hiking, uh sometimes you'll have hiking poles or you'll carry a backpack. Um you'll have these external things on the main body. Uh with you and homes are a lot like the same, uh as if you're hiking with. All this extra gear uh on you, so um homes aren't. You know, just perfect square boxes, uh nobody likes to live in a box per se. And even boxy type housing uh like you see on the left. Um does have some dynamic elements to it, uh the roof being one and and the porch, so. Even if you have a boxy house, your house isn't ever going to be quite perfectly boxy. Um it's going to have attachments and sorts, and so on the right. Um this house, you know, of course is protruding over water, but pretending that it's not. Um you can see that that house is quite dynamic, uh you've got a porch, you've got um different massing and modulation going on. Uh and all this relates uh you know to the lock and how it sits on the lot. Uh next page, next page please. So what kind of things can protrude uh project into our setbacks and our code? Uh lists a handful of things that, uh elements of a building that can project to the setback. Uh one of those is front porches, we allow them to protrude up to two feet into front setbacks. Uh fireplaces and chimneys can protrude up to two feet uh with no more with a width no more of seven feet. And same with bay windows. Eaves, so the the eaves on your roof, we allow to extend into the to setback up to twenty-four inches, next page. And uncovered porches, um depending on how far they are above grade or or at grade. Depends on how far into the setback they can protrude, so. If it's a porch or a deck that's uncovered and it's eighteen inches or above grade, uh you can extend up to eighteen inches into, or sorry. Five feet, sorry, eighteen inches into interior setbacks, five feet into the street setback. Um if they are below eighteen inches uh from the grade, they can go all the way to the property line. Um so that second image in from the left. As an example of of a deck that could be built basically right up to the property line. Uh fences, we of course allow to project into setbacks, this is an example of a non-building structure. And these we allow, of course, for obvious reasons, um if we required fences to meet setback requirements, um I don't think people would be too happy. And window wells, this is a rather new phenomenon that we're starting to see here in the city, um as we deal with lots that have slopes. Um builders are generally utilizing the grade and the space below grade. Uh which results in the need for uh window wells. These are generally more common in inner mountain states and places with basements, it's not too common that we have basements here. Uh in the northwest except for walkout basements or daylight basements as they're called. Uh but sometimes when they're in reverse, like here, we end up with a window well. And those can project uh two feet into interior setbacks as well. Uh next slide please. So now kind of jumping into the issues, um I just kind of wanted to point out this one case study that you're looking at in the picture. This comes out of Nashville, Tennessee. And this uh created a fiasco uh because. Uh the building inspector did his inspections uh prior to the home being built, but after the foundation was poured. So the foundations met the setback requirements and it wasn't until after the building was built on top of the foundation that. People started to notice, hey, your projections are going into the setback, and so a neighbor actually of this. Uh these two units uh complained to the city and said, hey, I don't think these units um are meeting setback requirements. And so they did an investigation, city came out and they discovered there's a whole bunch of units in this development where they have projections that. Uh go into the setback that aren't allowed. Um so you can see here this picture in this particular junction, how close those projections get to get to each other. Um and and it highlights the issue, really, when you start to get to small lot development. Um projections become a lot more precarious in terms of how they're allowed and where they're allowed, because as you can see. Um their impact is quite severe. Uh now, if these were typical suburban lots, uh you know, six thousand square foot lots, seven thousand square foot lots, these projections wouldn't be an issue. Um but when you're dealing with tight lots, small lot development, similar to what we would deal with in our R twelve or R twenty. Um it does become, can become uh kind of a a serious uh issue. Uh so some other kind of constraints or issues that can be caused by the uh projections in relation to tighter lots. Uh our our human access. Um right, so these two buildings, for example, now that we've got projections, we've got access issues. Uh that trickles into other effects such as fire safety, uh emergency access, those sorts of things, fire. Um because likely these firewalls aren't aren't rated um. Or, you know, that the similar rate as an attached unit would be. Uh so we've got now some additional dangers occurring. Uh we can also have conflicts with easements, so sometimes. Like in the city of Duval, uh we have our ten-foot front yard setback. We allow, uh you know, porches to extend two feet into that front yard setback. Well, sometimes within that ten-foot setback, we have utilities and the utility companies have easements. And utility companies don't like to have projections over their easements. Uh so that can create a conflict uh as well, that's usually maybe not caught until the building permit uh comes in. Uh it can also relate to mistakes regarding uh building foundation placement. We had that issue here in town a couple of years ago where the builder, um you know, poured his foundation within setbacks. But totally forgot about the porch and the porch projecting into the setback, and so by the time he poured his foundation and built his house. His front porch went beyond two feet to the front yard setback. Uh and we had to resolve that with the hearing examiner and the public hearing. Uh so those kind of issues can occur. Um what we've also seen is that builders will rely on projections into the setback. To meet the modulation requirements of our design guidelines, so. Modulations are kind of the ins and out of a building, so if you were to take in a building elevation and instead of it being a flat linear wall. Kind of the indents and bump outs would all, you know, work to form modulation to add interest to the side of a building. Um but what we're seeing on these tight lots is builders utilizing. Projections to meet their modulation requirements, which really wasn't the intent of projections. Uh to begin with, uh it was mostly made to accommodate, you know, certain characteristics of a home, so we don't end up with a box per se. But we're seeing that or or have seen that with some of these developments. Um and also. What becomes of an issue is the perception of privacy between units, again, as these lots get smaller and the homes get closer. Um the way a building projects in relation to its neighbor um can be off-putting. And then the other issue that's particularly difficult to see or visualize during the building permit review process. Is the relationship between the projection and the grading of the adjacent soil. So sometimes on paper, a projection might look great, it's on the second story. Um but then come to find out when it's built and the grading is finalized, you may realize that second story projection, you know, may. Be too low for somebody to walk under, uh for example. Uh you know, and then they're just, there might be slope issues, you might have a sloped side yard and then. You know, so if you've got a slip side yard to begin with, and then you've got a projection and you've only got five feet total, then your access. To your rear yards starts to get a little uh precarious. So this is some of the issues that we've seen come up. Next slide please. Uh so again, some local examples, um we'll start on the left, uh so. Here you can see a non-building structure of a retaining wall. Uh and then you can see how it interplays with a projecting um. This isn't the chimney per se, but it's accommodating a fireplace, um so now you have two competing projections. Uh eating up space on your side yard, so now access on the side yard of this house is severely hampered. And this will be, uh this issue will be highlighted even more once, once a fence is built on top of the retaining wall to separate the two. Uh properties. One thing too that always comes into play and it always comes to haunt us later down the road are these P U D boxes. I guess we don't always know where they're going to end up, uh but you can see in this instance on the left that that kind of compounds into the access issue. Uh the middle pitch picture highlights uh the slope and grading issue. Um so here you can see that we've got a foundation. It's built quite high up from the property line, you've got five feet between the foundation and that fence there. Um and and you've got a slope, so now can your access is compromised, you don't have an ability to really level that out. Um for access. And then on the right-hand side here, you're kind of seeing uh you know, a protrusion kind of invasive. Uh you know, issue, here's this one on the left is uh second story. Uh you've got a retaining wall and a fence, and so it's sort of like that. Again, that second story projection is kind of, you know, protruding a little bit on to kind of a sense of privacy for the building on the right. Uh next slide please. So um we are looking at doing some code amendments to our code. Um there are several solutions, several different ways to go about it. Um there is a simplified way, um which is not necessarily the best way, but. Uh we could just say, um we're gonna eliminate uh projections except for essential elements like roof eaves, fences and retaining walls. And say that's it. Or we can take a little bit more of a nuanced um. Approach and calibrate those projections according to the zone. So obviously in in higher density zones, we'd be a little bit more careful about what kind of proj- projections we allow. Uh versus a low-density zone where it's not so much an issue. Uh we can retain projection allowances on corner units. Uh corner unit is a unit that faces two streets, so they have, you know, a front, a street on the front and a street on their side. And the reason for that being is corner unit lots have to have two front setbacks essentially, which is a greater burden. Uh setback burden than an interior lot. Uh so allowing those corner corner units to maintain uh projections really doesn't hurt. Uh anything in terms of access or neighbors. Uh and then we could also add provisions to reduce conflicts between competing projections, and so this would require the builder. Uh to take a closer look at what they're proposing, you know, in terms of projections on. Units that are side by side and looking at grading and non-building structures and so forth. Uh next slide.
Um hold on, uh Mr. Davis, the person that has a quick question, I wasn't sure if you wanted a question during, or is that okay?
Uh generally prefer after, but uh it's your meeting, so. Okay, I'm just about done here, um. So urgency and complexity, um so we would prefer to resolve this in the near term, particularly as we're coming out of moratorium. Obviously, we have projects that are being built that are vested um to existing regulations, and so. Um this would apply, you know, to to new subdivisions uh coming in. Um and again, these these code amendments are are relatively simple compared to other code amendments. Uh it it's still, of course, would take discussion internally and with the development community and with the community in general. Um but in comparison to other types of code amendments, this one will be relatively, use the word relatively um, simple to do. Next slide. And now to questions.
Mayor, can we go back to the solutions slide, I was just saying to you back. Thank you, I would just a quick question on these, um are these solutions mutually exclusive or? Are are they all, you know, either or is basically, or can you do all of them, I was just curious. Or can you do all of them? I was just curious about that.
Yeah, so essentially uh solutions two through four are, you know, can be done inter interchangeably together. Uh one is kind of a, you know, standalone approach, um you know, where we would just say, hey, we're not gonna deal with projections except for roof. You know, just some basic things. Um that would be a simplified approach. It may not be uh desirable or acceptable as acceptable. Maybe it might, but. Um but yeah, the between the four options, two through four can be done to, you know, mix together. But one would be kind of standing on its own.
Sounds like any other questions? Uh Councilor Isaacson?
Yeah, coming out of the moratorium, do you, I mean, do you have any idea how many of these new developments it's gonna impact? And the reason why I ask is, I mean, a lot of these developers have been sitting around waiting to build these homes and people have bought lots and have home designs. That they're already planning on being built and the owners may be surprised now with the developer coming in. So I can't do that anymore. Because the city has changed code mid-straining as a result, not as a result, but. They've had time to change it as a result of what we're giving them time.
So this project would not impact anything that's backward.
Yeah.
It would be just looking forward where we have, where we don't have the applications in the projects.
There's no, no one will be coming back saying, I want to be engaged or I want to be grandfathered in or anything like that.
They'll probably come back and say it, I agree.
Yeah, we did. I did meet with the Master Goldfish Association for our January quarterly meeting. And they definitely have concerns if you start looking at their setbacks. But obviously you can see that what's happening now. Probably not in the best interest of health life and safety. And so I think they want to be partners as well. I think what they're looking for. Is kind of more refined tuning versus like an outright, nothing goes, you know, outside the setback. Other than maybe the roof, the overhang for the roof. Like that one's pretty consistent from the region. Um it could impact obviously development. I think one thing that happens is, you know. You know, everything's really expensive. It's expensive to develop, it's expensive to permit, it's, you know, across the board, a horrible housing crisis. And so they try to get, eat out every square inch of a lot, right? But I think our setbacks were more traditional to our suburban environment, like R four to R eight. But now we're going in R twelve, R twenty and mixed use. You're seeing where we're really hemmed in now where we have a walk and talk about this. But a wall isn't a straight vertical line, especially if it's over a couple of feet. If it's three or four feet, then sit on. Lot line and takes like an angle. And then if you have that wall that inside that, right inside that lot line, and then you have a projection. Then sometimes you're left with this really narrow area to maintain or access your house. And everybody needs to paint it from their side and from their windows. Right? And it then we also are having, um what we, you know, like what Troy talked about, which is some of these daylight basements. And, you know, builders want to put in uh state bedroom, you know, downstairs, which makes sense, right? Well, then you have to have a window well. Well, window wells need to project three feet because they're three feet width. And so we're working with one of our home builders now because we're like, you're not gonna be able to extend that, you know, beyond the two feet. So they're trying to come up with some solutions. So we're trying to be solution based even with our current development committee and try to say. Hey, we see this as a problem. We hope that you're gonna partner with us, even if it's not something that's about. Besting, like looking at maybe some other things, but moving forward, we do want to try. And I and come back and look at this with current commission and council. It won't be ready before we, you know, if we come out of moratorium, it won't per se be ready, but we'll be, we'll be working on it.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Um there's just a comment on window wells, uh first of all, since you guys are that low playing in part of part of the country, but they're common where I. Where I come from. They're also a safe uh escape, fire, fire escape, escape route. So they have to. They have to be a certain size to accommodate that. Also, we actually have to handle that. And so they decline, we decline that. Um let's see, but uh what I wrote on the comment was, I I do like a more flexible approach, the the combination two, three and four. I think that makes good sense uh for us, uh just, you know, ju- just because. You know, one size is not gonna fail. And that's why number one would uh would be. So I I like uh, I like the combination two, three and four better.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Uh before Councilor Isaacson goes again, is there anyone else?
So just kind of back to my question, I don't understand the explanation of why I'm so trying to, we have an idea how many. Developers or how many units were presented, these changes are going to impact, already have planned.
Zero, because anything that's vested will not be to this code. So we're still gonna have, you know, four or five hundred houses. Under the the previous code, the code that we have today. This will only impact projects that will be forward.
Well, so any more questions? Thank you so much for staying with us late tonight, Mr. Davis. All right, uh moving on to other scheduled items. First up is mayor's report. I've got a lot, but I'll try and be brief. Uh first off, today we had our San Cities Association's strong mayor's meeting. Um the conversation, I was unable to make it until it was about halfway done. But that conversation centered around the housing bills, uh continuing to move forward, legislators not listening to cities about the needs. And what we're actually doing. Um there are some people that are very convinced that uh allowing basically. Um up to six units per acre and maybe use a lot on every lot, um is the way to go, uh to fix mental housing, but the data shows otherwise. Um so we'll continue to work on those. Um there was also discussion on the public safety bills, the pursuit fixes and the Blake decision. Um it looks like we're gonna get something out of the legislature on that. Um hopefully also a study on the pursuit bill. Um to analyze where the the problems really exist. Uh right now, our issue is that. We have lots of law enforcement around the state when the bill passed, telling folks publicly on every TV station that police can no longer pursue. Even though uh many cities already had rules against pursuing um car thefts, et cetera, and and car leases. Which is is one of the reasons that we've had seen a lot more, um you know, pursuit really to crime, um and crimes. Following pursuits that were not done. Um and there's been some really tragic instances. So hopefully that study bill will. Will pass and get some actual good data so that we can finally right-size uh these policies. Uh we also had the Association Washington City's Board Meeting last Tuesday. Um the big issue on that is getting ready for the annual conference, um the nomination committee met. Um and has some preliminary thoughts on recommendations for the board of directors. Um and then the board moved on um the names for vice president and president to the general membership for the June meeting. So that means I will be moving up um from secretary to vice president in June. Um it was also, of course, Association Washington City's city action day. So thank you to city administrator McNav, Mayor Person McHenry. And Councilmember Natlin for coming out and uh helping advocate for our city's needs, um as well as networking. Uh we did have to do a little divide and conquer for legislative dinners. So I did attend. The legislative dinner for the first forty fifth and forty eighth districts uh legislators. Um in our respective cities, uh very well attended. There was no room, which is fine. That is one of the reasons we had split the carver. Um but lots of discussion on uh the housing bills, again. Public safety bills and uh extended producer responsibility in legislation. So lots of environmental talk, but um great conference. Good feedback from our legislators. Um we met with uh Representative or Representative Springer, Senator Dingra. And then a joint meeting um open house style with Representative Gadar and Representative Steele from twelve districts. Um I'll reiterate, we're really lucky to have them, even though they're not officially our representatives. Um and hoping to host them here at some point this next spring. Um also, on behalf of the Association Washington Cities. My role as secretary in the last two weeks, um I testified on the police pursuit bills and uh lake fix bills. As well as this morning, uh on the property tax bill sixteen seventy, uh sixteen seventy is not on our legislative agenda. But in my role as E W C secretary, um we advocate for the organization. Uh and so for those that don't know, that would change our property tax um cap to a middle ground of what we had previously. Before I seven forty seven passed, um as we're a constitutional memory and stated by the legislature, where we have a one percent cap. And move up to a three percent cap that includes um new construction, um as well as that inflationary. So it doesn't get to inflation. But it's the middle ground between the six percent less than construction that existed before seven forty seven. And then the re-improvementation legislatively of seven forty seven after it was overturned by the state's front court. Um also of note for the group, uh Puget Sound Energy has a new content for local government affairs. Uh for those that don't know, David Hoffman, um who's the new executive director of the City's Association. Um was the previous uh local person at P S V. And many will recognize his name, Matt Larson, former mayor of Zephonni, is our new representative. Um so I got his contact information to share with folks. Um he was one week on the job last week and super anxious and excited about it. So. Um I think we all, those of us that know him, all look forward to working with him in this same capacity. And finally, um our community development department has fantastic news to share. After months of really hard work. Uh Director Thomas has two new planners starting on March third. Um so that process ended up successful at the end of last week. Um and she will finally have a relatively bold team for the first time in years. So we're all really excited about that. And with that, any questions? Seeing then, we'll move on to council community reports. I don't believe we have any. And so then other council reports, I'm assuming they have personnel like to share your experience. Um sure, and especially their closest to dinner.
Um, oh, that was really great. Yeah, I mean, you recapped really well. Um and so I just reiterated everything you said. Um yeah, the dinner we attend. Myself and Councilmember Natlin attended. It was really great. Um just a lot of casual conversation and a lot of interesting things came up and. Um you always find all that middle grounds, like we share so much in common with everybody, you know, um and you find that for. We're all kind of moving towards some of the big goals. Um and just seeing where we overlap. Um so I really enjoyed that. Um and just getting to who was there. Carnation and Monroe and just, you know, others too, but getting to talk to all of them, that was really fun. And then um I guess one other thing, I tomorrow, uh is the twenty second at ten thirty in the morning. Will um be at C C's for council chat. It went in the newsletter, but I forgot to email all of you. I will be there if anyone wants to join me. Um I'm gonna try and get um a few months worth of dates planned out unless anyone else wants to do that. And then just see if. Um who we can get to sign up so we can have um a couple of us. But that's where I'll be tomorrow. That's it. Thank you. Do any other councilmembers have anything like, like to share? Seeing then, we'll move on to the police department monthly report with the chief. Good luck.
Good ma- good evening, Mayor, our council, city staff and community members who are present, Chief Bach, Duval Police Department, and everyone here. Okay, I'll be inviting you with the police staff report for January twenty twenty three. Uh our two newest officers, you met one of them this evening, are progressing well through the field training program. Uh they're both great additions to our team and we're very happy to have them on board. We do have two lateral candidates who have finished the background process. Uh one of them was offered a position and he will start February twenty seven. Uh we plan on sending an offer to the other uh camp candidate this week and we're hoping to have them on board around March first. Um this will bring us to full staffing level, something we haven't been at in a very long time. Uh it's been quite a journey over the past eighteen months and we're proud of the work that's been done to get us to where we are in the diversity that we created in our police department. Um we want to thank you all for your unwavering support along those legs. It's been a long process. Um having this young and experienced staff, obviously, uh we're going to require it to be focused on mentoring, training and developing them. Um throughout the remainder of this year. So that's what our attention is gonna be mainly directed towards for the remainder of the year. On January eighteenth, we hosted a department meeting. Uh during that meeting, I had the privilege of presenting Oscar Dean with a community oriented police service award. Um this was for his valuable and outstanding community service that was completed in twenty twenty two. Uh Oscar Dean was responsible for coordinating the National Night Out and the Bay then Blue Venom, other things that he's been doing. And he's also now reaching out to uh various groups within the city to start uh building our rapport relationships with them as well. Now for the bad news. Uh during January, both our camera system and access card system at the police department began to fail. Um one camera stopped working completely and this camera is located in a crucial area. Uh need for normal operations, the police department. Luckily, we're under uh updating the police department under construction currently. So we're not utilizing that area, but prior to going back in to service, that camera needs to be replaced. Also, because of the updates, our female locker rooms now where holding cell room is and there's a camera located in there. So that camera needs now be relocated to a different area outside of uh. The P D and where our uh satellite court areas where we take prisoners on and out of uh. Out of our vehicles and into the holding facility. So we're gonna relocate the camera that's currently in the female locker room and put that out in that area so we can monitor that area as well. Our accident, our access system is not functioning properly. Um we just realized this. Uh and we got these newer recruits. And we're trying to get them their access cards. Um that they, our system's no longer time stamping, so we can't control access for our building currently. And um we can't turn cards off with their loss or stolen, which is a biggie. So uh both systems were purchased in the early two thousands, I'm gonna say around two thousand and four. So we've got. Like the light bottoming and they are at the end of their life cycles. Um we have requested quotes for replacement and it appears that our current vendor is the most cost effective route and which is statewide security. Um I'm making you aware of this because uh these are items that need to be replaced before we resume normal operations. And they were not budgeted for and they will have to be added to the biennial uh budget adjustments uh later this year. I have attached a police report uh for January twenty two, twenty three to include the minutes from the public safety committee meeting in January very first. And are there any questions?
Councilmember Schaefer?
Uh two, yeah, just a rough, that's been almost like, you know, the camera security, I can access. Systems, you know.
Yeah, the access control system, the quote that we were given, um for the total work, including labor is fifty thousand eight hundred and twenty seven dollars. And then the video surveillance system, which is replacing all our analog cameras with the new technology and getting them to record the thirty days worth of data. Um is gonna be eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and that's included with uh later as well, running the camera wire and so forth.
So true. Can we get those on our consent agenda for the next time? And what are the precautions?
We can probably do a free approval agenda bill potentially, because if it goes, if it's under twenty five thousand, um.
Yeah.
We, but it's not budgeted and still need you guys to cancel the approval of the purchase. So um we can probably. Have an agenda bill within the next meeting or meeting after a council, the rest of council concur, so just getting it done and creating that consent so you can move forward.
Okay, I think we need to do those sensible reasons.
So I'm seeing a lot of that and that's all I think that is a, let's go for it. I think the Councilmember Isaacson.
Chief, as a result of technology, like I said, it only lasts so long. Our I T department tended to research it, right? My assumption is that because we had a kind of skeleton and a subcontracted I T department. It's just now being folded into the I T lesson learning. Let's make sure that this doesn't happen again.
We, I think they are on board um with this and they've been helping me through the process of looking at what's being installed and what's gonna be being replaced. And so they are aware of it happening.
We're working through what they call a big gaps analysis and they've been working on that as part of when they did their ninety day contract. Less than we've been able to, we have some projects that maybe we should.
Prevent a maintenance, yes, no, don't lie again. And I won't, I won't be here in, what's it, two thousand and four, so twenty years now. But two years from now, we'll want city council to learn a lesson again. We don't have to do it especially. I think you're gonna be the mayor in twenty years, right?
Yeah, I did speak with uh uh C M McNabb and she's wanting to bring us to your end aside. So when she gets back, we're gonna work on getting that agenda prepared and brought forward. We do have approximately ninety days of construction at the. That we have to implement. So we're only three weeks into it. So we have some, some time, but not long.
Well, thank you, chief. And I just want to say congratulations on being fully staffed up. Uh I think you'll probably be the only. Partner in key cabinet that's fully staffed again, and we went through that a few years ago. Um which uh speaks volumes to the leadership of the department and folks wanting to be here, especially for example, our newest. Our newest officer, who has family and lives in Snoqualmie, has moved here to be at the department. Um and I think that really speaks uh not just to uh the culture that's being built, but to the leadership within the organization at all levels. Um and the culture that's being built to be positive, community-oriented. Um and focusing on solutions and not, and not just wrapped in tough law enforcement. Uh and that's, I think we're getting recruits as a result of that culture, um and that's what we want to promote, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We, it is the first time that we've actually have waiting to be ahead and an additional two later would apply today. I mean, the word's getting out there that Dubal's changing. A great place to work, so I'm happy for that. And it is true, at the chief's meeting, I'm finally one of the only chiefs that's not worried about recruiting and retention, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Um and moving on to, uh we have a public hearing for the N P D E S Stormwater Management Program this evening. Uh so I'll go ahead and open the public, and we'll have a presentation by staff. Um and then if anyone from the public has um. Uh a public comment to provide, you'll be afforded that opportunity, um then we will close the hearing. Um and uh council can discuss um at a later date, or we can discuss under unfinished business if there are any questions. So hearing is okay, so take it away, Mr. Braden.
Um good evening, Mayor, Council, uh staff and residents. So every year, we have to do as part of our permit uh for national pollution discharge elimination system permit from the Department of Ecology, an annual report. So basically what the annual report is, is it's what we plan on doing to meet all of our permit requirements for the coming year. So this covers twenty twenty-three. Um and the biggest things um that are permanent requirements is what I'm gonna touch on. There's a lot of things in the permit, but the things that um. We really attack every year um and have continued compliance uh are what I'm gonna talk about tonight. Excellent. Um so public education, public reach, um involvement, participation, this is part of that checkbox. Um having the public hearing to get public input on um how we are implementing our permit. Um is greatly appreciated and a requirement. Um we do education and stewardship. We try to do um share things that are going on, not only in our community, but locally within our. Kind of the Snoqualmie Valley um for planting opportunities, um restoration. Uh wetland uh things, all kinds of stuff that we can find, that we try and blast on social media in order to get the word out. Um we're also doing, we started storm drain stenciling, which um has kind of tapered off a little bit as it's gotten wet, but it was really popular when we started it. Um so that's another thing to kind of engage the community and, and go and, and adopt your, you can both adopt your drain with um. Another one of our programs that we have and then you can stencil it so that people don't dump things down. And it's just kind of fun things to do with kids. Um which is another part of engaging um our community at, at all age groups. We do go into um the schools and the classrooms through a third party and do some education and stewardship opportunity that way. Um. Our listed discharge detection and elimination, again, is it, it ongoing all throughout the year. Um we do, it's not just from new development, it's, you know, also some things that, you know, can just happen. Um spill response activities, um so car accidents, um somebody calls and says, hey, I saw somebody dumping paint down the drain. Um we have a hotline on our website, um and the ability to email the stormwater at Dubalwa.gov. Um we do our annual catch basis screening to try and catch um anything that's tied into this firm system that isn't supposed to be. Um and then we do our annual inspections um to comply with permit requirements for our publicly owned and privately owned facilities. Excellent. Um this kind of dovetails onto that, um controlling runoff from development, um it's, it's, we have a lot of development going on, um and. Back, oh, back when, as I've been told by um our superintendent. A lot of development didn't used to happen when it rained, but now it seems like development happens when it rains. And so we have an additional layer of a wet weather permit that we do. Um so it's uh addition, additional inspections and um just monitoring the site and checking to make sure that there's no listed discharges. Um and we review all site plans um and have record keeping for, to comply with our permit. That we continue to do. Uh operations and maintenance, again, uh primary requirement and it's always ongoing. Uh we up, we updated um some of our code to adopt the new design manual from King County. Um both the design manual and the pollution prevention manual for commercial and multifamily residential properties. So this is a new deadline that we have um for this year. Our permit cycle ends, it's from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-four. So um one of the last loops on this is to inspect. Uh businesses and private uh commercial facilities basically that have storm. Associated with their properties. We have historically done it. Um some jurisdictions that are a little bit larger haven't, so we have most all of our businesses mapped. Um and we do inspect them. The next thing is gonna be implementing requirements to, um if there is no facility. For say water quality, um from uh my parking lot, um we are gonna need to find a way. To require that those minimum standards are met. So it's, it's been a challenge uh for a lot of municipalities to, to find a way to kind of make sure that they're. Meeting this permit department and we're in a good place to where we at least meet minimum standards. For um when any of these commercial buildings or parking lots. Say, for instance, Safeway was built um to a design standard at the time, so we don't have to go back and make them to be anything different. Next move. So some of the permit considerations that we, we look at through the year. Um we do utilize staff and funds to improve the water quality and best comply with our permit requirements. Um we try to use public survey information. We did just do, um I think it was two years ago. To work on our uh behavior change analysis, um we partnered with a couple other cities. To do a survey about stormwater to kind of gauge what people know and how we can affect the behavior change out of that, so that's still an ongoing. Um thing that we're doing. Um implementing low impact development, best management practices, so that's looking at um more green infrastructure versus the gray infrastructure. Um and then continue to use staff to develop and implement programs throughout the city. We did hire um an assistant city engineer. Uh he was the intern from last summer, so I'm gonna be looking at really moving him into um. Working a little bit more detail for our stormwater program because things are just getting um. More and more restrictive and time-consuming and one, Sarah, uh Sarah and I. Are only two people that have a lot to do, so I'm really excited to have um him come on board and, and start helping, so hopefully. You'll see his face over the next year. And then continue to use the funds for facility cleaning um and enable us to fulfill all of our permit requirements. Excellent. Um to the public and council, anyone, if you would like to make comments, uh our report. Uh for twenty twenty-three, annual report is on the storm webpage. Uh so if you wanna look throughout and if you have any suggestions or comments, concerns, please try and get them to us before March seventeenth. Um we, it, our annual report is due March thirty-first. Um so yes, that concludes my.
Thank you, Ms. Braden. We have anyone that'd like to do a micro comment this evening? Seeing then, um do we have any written comments from the board that we need for this?
Not to our city clerk, um now boss, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Um with that, then, public hearings, please. And we'll move on to unfinished business, um and I wanted to afford council the opportunity to ask questions for, for those that this is made to, uh Councilmember Isaacson.
With your question, how much do you think our stormwater drain goes into the river without, we want to do a filtration work, some type of catch basin?
Um I would say a very small portion of it, uh there's not, we have a mixture of. Both like an oil and water separator, um some contact filters, which are, you know, the filter bolts that are in the ground. And those medias range based on when they were installed. Um but I would say ten percent maybe doesn't go to anything and it just discharges to like a creek without any water quality. We have coke tunnels and thayer that then feed into um the Snoqualmie River, but everything else that has a pipe, we have. Three discharge culverts that we look at every year that are on Snoqualmie and then we have. Um two off of Cherry Valley that go to Wagon Wheel and then ultimately to Snoqualmie. So, and we inspect those every year.
Any other questions? So then, thank you so much. Um moving on, uh we do not have any new business, so we'll move to executive section under R C W. Forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero sub one sub A, so. I, I, uh and with that, um anyone who's not um part of staff or council. Uh that doesn't need to be here, we'll ask um you to leave the room, and we do not expect to connect any further business.
Thank you.